I really want. Yeah, that's a good question. Let me know when you're. There you go.
The system has been updated.
Yeah.
And that will be. Kind of remediation. I mean.
That's. That's. Yeah. We'll be identifying. Okay, so we're good to go. Sounds good. We do have some individuals here. Work session. This is just a standard work session. It's. Yeah.
I.
Yeah. So. Yeah. What you don't. Five. I'm going to go with.
I think you know that I just said we don't have to take long.
Right.
Right.
Definitely.
I didn't do it for too. This is how I hope. Okay. I don't want to say it's a problem.
That's. That's a part of. I would like to know if there's something. Yeah. Yeah.
First thing. Sure. It's. I.
Their parcel. The rest of the. Across the way. Down. They. That. But while. Still not. Like. Uh, in positions of gravity. This side. Or this side. Boy, I think. That. That. Kind of theory is like. Why did. Kind of. It's like. Perma. This million. But. Not the. Freedom of freedom. The fact that the brain. That the virus. Painted. By. I am still. All the. Here's. New gets private. I'm gonna do that. Who that. Which. So instead. Tied in to. Of course, me. That. Therefore, saying gravitation. Gravitation, as it says, maybe not to down about the. One thought. For lip station. The motivation, like sort of the. Four. And then Carol. Really. They tie in perfect. And the engineer may. May have some questions on that, but. Uh, it ties them further down into the gravitation. Part of the system. And not directly. It's more. Such. Beyond. Right now, with. How. You know, maybe. Not in. So. That part of the system. I guess, is more of. Trend. But. That's.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So. That's the little bit that I. You have. Partly that. Chasing. That. Yeah. Other than. Sound happening. Better. That's. That's. Oh. You. And like the building. Sure. Sure. This is different part. For once, the. Monster. It's. I. We wonder. Feature of that. The power of. Yeah. So. Bring just. Develop. That. And. Or the. Time. So. Pardon.
With that.
Yeah. Goes beyond the religion. Of the. Some ways. With the. Great son. Captain. He uses. I can point to him. His account of thought, but. Their. Historically developed. Long. Con. That people. More. Bad. Unwise. Generation. These. And they'd say. That all. Has taken. Well. While. That's. Other. Contact. Yeah. By. When we can bring to the subject, so that's. The first thing that I can. That's what we. They have. That comes in town. Going. To the. The. This. On. That. Who. The. From this to my. Not really. I don't know. To. Not believe anything. I mean, I think that's. No, it's not here. Some. Well. That's. It's very long. The. About. It's. Well, I guess. Right. But. Yeah. This.
As they say, like in. The. That.
Right. All of our. Attack. By. Sorry. So. So. That. Alright.
Good. Think about. You. From. What? But. That. I thought that was something that we. Because I kind of. I'm. A lot. But.
It's. Okay. See. But. One one.
Hmm. Hmm. Yeah.
So. Uh. We might say it is six o'clock. Well. For a. But. Our regular. My report meeting from Monday. July twenty second. Four. All right. Like religions.
Fine. You want that?
Yes.
Ricky Perry?
Yes.
Having you to her? Yes. From Pasco?
But we do have the one application on the time for whatever patient is twenty four back in the airway. Dollar general. As. Full staff.
The. The site plan shows a. In my own mind, at the corner of. The narrower parcel, further to the south of yours. Is that to indicate that the. The parcel of which you're purchasing, does it include that narrow? And this is the new property line? Yeah. Yeah, well, because it's on tape.
Yeah. Uh, that narrow silver land is part of the.
I. I don't know how we can not prove the town of Plattsburgh. It is part of this discussion because that was in the town. But it's still part of the same parcel with split jurisdictions. They are not. Because they can't do it. They have two separate texts. One happens to be in the town, one in the city, but. They. There's a. They're identifying this as a single parcel by the. My point, question is, is this one parcel or is it two parts? Would you please? Can you show me? Yeah. Okay, but they. This was a nice question, just the one that was identified, okay? As long as, you know, the nation that we have. We're making certain we are not. We, we are not giving a determination. It's in the town. They're, they're only responsible for. Property, right, as, you know, there's some. One location. We found, so not doing anything regarding. That was divided up in two thousand. I believe. So I think. There may have been. Here I go.
Yeah, it's in your summary before we, before we ask the applicant.
Sorry, I just had a quick. Thank you.
Biden. Continuing on. Here's. The grading plan provided. We just circled some of the. The grades. Um, DPW has requested that the applicant provides that the latter service line size sizes, water and sewer connection details and. For runoff to Route nine. Municipal lighting district requests load calculations. Right away. A location for. Building inspector's office. Property for, for entry and otherwise satisfied. Town of Plattsburgh. Request that either a swift or silk fence is required. And that serum water will be put in place and. Recommend the dividend or name market. They provided what a similar review that they have recently completed. And what the initial proposal was with the. After their, the planning board conversation. Was had and then what. Result, build result was. Um, the town of Plattsburgh also recommends DOT coordination. Environmental services had no concerns. And there were other, no other department comments received. For any staff review. The recommendation from Penningstaff is that the applicant, that the board requires the applicant to set aside a department. Um, review comments that we've just covered. There are a few items that have not made it fully into the legend, so we recommend that the board request that the symbology be activated and confirmed. Um, that the applicant completes their zoning table for the proposed adherence to the zoning requirements. So, and then depict driveway setbacks. This is a carryover, the swift recommendation or silk fence is a carryover to Plattsburgh. Uh, request. Recommended store water management controls to depict sewer line flow direction, depict construction, seting area. Um, that will confirm the total area impact. Uh, no applicable vegetation. Clearly the preferred cut width. Again, DOT coordination is recommended. Recommended aesthetic improvements as the board sees fit. Uh, he did not receive a lighting plan, so it's recommended to request the lighting plan be submitted. As well as an interior layout of floor plan of the proposal. A better depiction of waste storage and any associated training. So there were no. Or where recyclables would be placed on the property. Um, and then depiction, it was recommended that the board request that applicant where the delivery location. And access for delivery gift would be from building and flooring. And to. Be in concert with the complete street policy. It's recommended that there be a depiction of offsite pedestrian and or bicycle access to the right of way.
Okay, thank you.
The last piece, the complete streets, pedestrian access. Uh, is there a plan that you can get to easily that shows, is there a sidewalk that's going to be included with this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or are you talking?
To the road, to.
Looks like it's right here in concrete side.
Okay.
Yeah, at least on the one I'm looking at, this is concrete sidewalk.
That's not existing. Yeah. I thought the sidewalk is on the east side of nine there and that there isn't anything on the west side existing, so that would be added.
There's an existing sidewalk, it's. It kind of, the hatch doesn't stand out very well.
Okay.
But it's great.
Alright, thank you.
But I do think there's.
Yeah, yeah, I see it, thank you.
So we do have, um, the applicant here along with engineering representative. The applicant here along with engineering representative to be up top to make presentation. If you'd like. So I think at this point. What we're trying to do is build the building for ten thousand six hundred forty square feet. And. What I'm understanding is the two major issues are DOT and stormwater. You know, so. What if you've got the eruption control plan available? But the cell represents the area of disturbance and that is zero point nine three acres. So as we, as you mentioned, it basically means that we per deal or New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. We do not need to do a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Obviously, it's within your right to ask personal information and we can do that for you if you want. Some communities have it written right in there. Laws that if you're going to increase in previous area, then you need to match existing and we didn't see that in the city zone. So that's why I didn't do it in this case, but we can obviously it's something we can look at. The other thing we can do is we could add. To keep everything from running towards Route nine. The soil is fairly fertile, so there's quite a bit of. Ability for percolation to happen in the runoff in that area. We even have soil data on that. But we could change the grid a little bit and essentially capture it and asphalt, catch bases in. And run it over this storm animal. Which then we most cross really that it shows discovered or discussed earlier. So that is an option to be sure of allowing the full. Yeah, pond, which I personally don't like ponds, void them or stormwater. Detention chambers that are low grade. There's obviously a lot of that in the task that makes it so close to this. My experiences, Lea, you land. I've put a lot of it over the years and it's not even remaining, so. So those are the two main issues we have as far as the elevation, what the building looks like. You know, if we could get some ideas on. What the board would like to see instead of us just throwing darts at it. At least what materials you buy for. Certainly, obviously, there's been a number of different options you can do for elevation views. If we have an idea of what your code is, it's planned as for that. Something we definitely look at. Other issue was obviously that. Property line issue or the neighboring house. That's going to be addressed between neighbor and. That we don't transfer some land so that we don't have, so that they don't own half their house.
It's that's a mobile home, it says it's kind of on the problem.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of a line runs right through it.
Yeah.
Yes. So that'll be the rest. That's a good point, really any questions? The two now screening, we really aren't hitting out any trees and stuff, just a little bit of rough on this corner. So everything that Sarah is saying, except for just the small slot there. There's still a lot of vegetation. That is just a variation. So I, I mean, I think you did on who are the major items in terms of the stormwater, right, from DOT. I do, now that I see this, the little one, I looked at the survey, I do see that your. Your drive technically goes over the city bounds if you. If you carry in the property line straight through to the east.
Right, so the property line never have the here, it's your right.
Correct, and outside the city, like actually stretch out, so. I do think that some, some coordination with our planning staff to. Confirm DOT's desire to review jurisdictions makes sense.
And we have sent some preliminary drawings to DOT already. We just don't have really any comments back yet, so. We're waiting on them.
In addition, while we're on the driveway. When we're talking about complete streets and making, you know, putting it here so it can be with accessible to people. The sidewalk goes right into the driveway. Is there an option to have the sidewalk? Not have people have to walk up the driving lane?
Uh, you just get the building?
Yes.
Yes, we could look at a best inside law.
Yeah. Yeah. But just like, I just, you know, I drive down that road a lot and like, I feel like people will kind of whip in and whip out a little bit. So I think having some designated walking area would make it more in alignment with the complete streets.
There is discussion within our zoning ordinance as well of actually connecting street to building. However, that's, you know, proposed and accomplished. So, good suggestion.
Where is the trash proposed to go right now? And you know, there was mention of screaming for it.
Irons down on.
Yeah.
So that's the drop off location.
Okay.
In the building and then. So I don't know that. I look to, I didn't, that's one thing I didn't see detail on the plan per se, if that's.
There is.
If that's something you can add, yes.
And the whole backpack for the property is just going to stay as is? Just open, it's kind of like open grassy area?
The water and sewer sizing. So this is just a one inch water service. That note didn't make it on the approach, the water line profile, but the sewer is just a four inch, it's just two bathrooms. You know, there's really no, there's no food prep in a Dollar General, it's just. Two bathrooms and a mop sink, so. There's not, you know, much less use in a single family house with the. As far as the water and sewer goes. Typically, unless there's something, some type of question about municipal facility, you know, that's just a coordination with our Department of Public Works. Make sure you have the right detail on there.
Yeah, maybe we'll get those added.
That that should. Resolve any questions here.
Well, it's not, I don't think it's just City of Plattsburgh Water and Sewer Department because. The stormwater lines that come over the corporation line, the town. The town must have, I mean, I don't see any. Any right of way for the stormwater lines.
The storm comes here.
That goes right from the town. Yep. But look at it before there, before their crosses, keep going up. It crosses, no. You got a line that goes to the left there.
Yeah, that one.
Right there. No, the one next line. Is that a town of Plattsburgh stormwater line? Yeah.
It's tying into the system, but the system. The city, so unless I could count this time, you say.
Yes. But it, but as we. As we start making decisions about the site plan, we have other entities that have interest. And I would say that if they have a right of way that goes through there for that storm line, then. They should. We should be asking them if they have concerns.
So the only thing I would say is I don't believe there's a regularity all out indeed.
Okay.
So I don't think there's a formal right of way, but.
Okay. And how does that work?
Uh, you know.
They don't have right.
Back in the old days, they used to just. Little horse.
There's a lot of these guy.
Yeah, it's just a little. Storms would hang all over there. To Rick's point, I think those are some of the things to work on the final design, starting with our city VPW and then. If the town, I mean, the town didn't offer comment in their initial review in that regard. You know, confirming that, and then quite frankly, the drain manhole for the storm on Route nine that goes to the south. Now that drain manholes over would would be technically out of the city and DOT is right with, so. You don't have. You know, that, that would.
So that's an insis.
Just sometimes. Coordinate between three entities.
Is there a, uh, because a business sign opposed anywhere?
It's that one, is it?
Oh, right there, yep.
So we anticipated there'd be a separate assignment or permit for that. Most likely, we'll have some process. While we are showing that that is the footprint of the sign, the location for it.
Going back to the building inspector's comment, re- requiring screening. I don't think it was a request.
I think all he said was try. Well, look at it, but I think if you have more than had remove any more vegetation.
There's ten parking spaces, you have to, you're required to have screening.
So this is your tree line.
Okay. And that's.
That's all. Should be taking vegetation.
Okay.
And then on the back.
Was there one of them you were? So was your statement that you're gonna?
We're only taking just a small, like clearing every lane. It's just a small red. Brush that tears in the way of the corner of that.
Okay.
Still have all of this vegetation. Blocking.
Okay, so. I think he would. Feel you. To take the minimal amount that we can take. Okay. Didn't say to add additional vegetation. Could we get clarification from Joe as to whether. He's requiring. Screening of that parking area?
So what do you think about? In the planning comments in number nine, it says to provide a flat or the vegetated plan. How will be revegetated, so maybe that goes in the. The note, I guess, in the resolution, it just be alongside.
It just says, he's, the building inspector comment says, one note, we would like to add, however, is that vegetation on the north and possibly west side of the property. Be maintained to screen the parking areas for adjacent residential lots.
Cause it be maintained.
So by not taking all the vegetation, you think you met the spirit of what he's saying?
Yeah.
Did you just ask Joe for clarification, please?
I would expect that as much clarity as I will get.
Oh. Okay.
I, I can try to get more of the clarification. And what we could do as well is. Run the, run the updated and buy them and say, ask them that would be.
I mean, if you're looking forward to be revegetated in that area, would it be possible to revegetate in the area where those trees are being cut? Is that just to get the site trapped for the parking lot or is it?
There's also a key.
Yeah.
Education or assholes.
You can screen in multiple different ways. The requirement of the code is that if you have a parking area and you're creating a large parking area. That has ten or more spaces, you're required to screen it. And so.
So you want.
My curiosity is, does this meet the building inspector's interpretation of parking lot screening?
Another, I, I think it's relevant because there's another house right there across from the Nevada Bowl, is that right?
There is a complex. Yeah, there's some there, but.
Right there. Right there, yeah, that's the, the right underneath those. That's another residential building or am I?
No.
That's a.
What is that called again?
Compensation.
Of compensation.
So it, and that little bump out is a city owned parking.
Yeah, okay.
That is, you know, when people are coming in and out in at night, especially during the winter. You have headlights that.
Yeah.
Reflect into people's homes, you know, that's why we. Try to buffer some of that.
Um, if it helps, we could just put a fence along their right side.
That would help.
Just, just to block so the, uh, homeowners and get license in their windows.
Yeah, that's what.
That would be.
That's what, uh, one of the Dollar Generals did out on the turnpike.
Yeah, if you guys want a fence, we could do, uh, either a water or a fire, something like that.
That would be insane, I think that would be a problem. We gave her a request of floor plan. Got the location on the floor plan.
Yep, we'll get you a.
Within that, within that screen plan, did you provide that landscape plan? Me, I don't remember. Okay, I mean. Without our standards, it generally indicates about screening and matching in with the neighborhood. You know, if whatever fencing you're proposing is sort of blended with an overall. Landscape plan addresses on streets gave that probably go a long way.
Okay.
And. Sorry, I keep going back a little bit, but with the sidewalk, it also might be beneficial to have some sort of bike racks as well. Because you are so close to the bike path. Or you already have on.
Yeah, we blow over, we saw that in the comments.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I mean, facilitate business, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Usually put them all, but we do.
Yeah, we have a public. Bike path way along, well, the Gordon path plus adjacent to Route nine, US Avenue. We have a nice.
Oh, yeah, there is that, it all double.
But you know what's interesting about that? I don't think there's a location where we have a crosswalk that crosses that area. I think the next one is the Roundabout.
Yeah, it is up farther.
Not that we're asking. But it's, it should be worthy of future consideration if we're doing anything up there.
Wouldn't. Within the site plan review, we do have a sign, a separate sign from it, but within the site plan review, there is a call out for location dimensions. Details for all signs.
If early, we provided the sign.
Yeah, whatever your.
That was early on.
Don't thank you.
That wouldn't be really for my application. I did not see it in the application.
We'll try. I was gonna say, so have you incorporated that in your details? Upster enclosure.
I think I'll go back to one of my original questions on the seeker, why? Why this is determined to be a short form? It just, for the protection of the purchaser of the property. You know, the history of the site certainly be beneficial. For some type of more extensive review. We don't know the status since it was the. Hang farm, well, I may be the oldest one here. But. That, that was the use of the site, there was remediation. To what extent or degree, I can't tell you and to what conclusion. So it would be. I think we would be doing. Justice to the purchasers and developers of the property that. We at least have some kind of knowledge of how that site was remediated.
So I think beyond. We have a pretty extensive phase one and a new phase two.
We do.
Yeah, it was the first thing I did for like a month when we first went to the project is. Because of what it was there, so we, we have, I can provide you guys a lot of information if you'd like. That's very long. That's what I was thinking is, I, I don't know that we deviate from the short form, seeing that's, no, that's where your project. Falls, not that the board can't make it, but if we could get. You know, results in the phase one, so that led to a phase two. Uh, there was, I believe, I have to go back and take, there were. Uh, there was, I believe, I have to go back and take, there was a phase two a while ago when we did a phase one that confirmed the results of. Of the previous work. I think that'll hold, and then also uh there's typically like the page four auto fill of the short form that I see is not attached to our. We can get that.
Anybody else have any other comments?
I think the elevation is perfectly fine considering the type of building it is. I the only question would be is 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 there a different style that would fit better with the town?
I think that was our only last comment or question to review that I saw.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with this, but if if um there's a different style preferred by the town to conform with their. Ideas, so I guess that would be.
If the keyboard is operating, is there any way to look up the other pictures?
Before we switch. Can you just confirm the finishes that you're proposing?
Yeah, what are those?
Yeah. So.
Okay.
Um. Obviously, you can see the three sides are metal uh metal siding, uh standard metal siding. Um, I actually don't like that color, so I'm probably gonna I I might propose to a different color for the metal siding. I prefer like a darker.
Like dark yellow.
Yeah, I don't like the yellow.
Me either.
Um, so I will read it. I'll submit that with something different, but um the uh the lower. At the half, the building is brick. Um, and then above that is an E F S uh little goose neck. Lights and those are uh those are not full windows. They don't go through the building. They are applied to the outside of the building. They're they're real windows, but they don't go through because there's shelves behind there. And they we found that there could be leaks in there and nobody will ever know, so they apply them to the outside of the building. Uh, that's primarily what we're. We're looking after that. Okay, and the the awnings that goes uh like a metal? They're metal on it.
Yeah, do you have? Yeah, I would like to see a picture of like ones that look similar to this, like have you built ones that look?
I I we have uh probably a few months ago, I can su- submit a picture. Uh, I don't have it with me.
No, 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 that's fine.
Yeah, we can.
More curious.
And we've done other styles as well, so if you're really interested in another style, we can we can work on that. As long as you know your.
I personally agree, uh I think it's appropriate. Given that uh the former Air Force Base is still on the National Historic Registry. The in the view shadow Plattsburgh Bay is still on the National Historic Registry. In the islands, so having that. Consistency with, you know, the historic settings that you're. Substantially contiguous to really makes sense.
Yeah, the Redford I think is appropriate.
Yeah.
I can't remember is on those, we will likely continue to break on even on the metal size. Just because people hit on them. The metal dense and it's just easier to break out and just, you know, three sides of brick.
Oh, yeah, especially on that parking lot.
People run cart shopping carts into into it.
Yeah, their carts stored outside or the inside?
So the carts are stored inside. Right in the front. Um, they're supposed to collect them every day. You know. Maybe if they do every single day, but they they are. So in that picture, they're outside, they're generally inside in the uh. In the ones that we fill um. That one probably doesn't have uh the entry of the larger entry area. This is a bigger store than the previous ones that they used to do. And then we talked a little bit about the dumpster enclosure. Uh, we'll put that on there. We generally do the vinyl. If you guys want something different, the vinyl chain link. Do you want something different with the snow? Uh, you know, we've done other.
I think coordinating it with the other screening was nice.
So whatever we do on the fence?
Yeah.
So we could do a we could do a vinyl and do a wave vinyl fence and a wave vinyl dumpster enclosure. We've done that before or or wood, whatever you guys prefer.
Wood.
Would.
Looking at the the floor plan. It is there? Warehousing on the interior of these buildings?
I think it's about twelve hundred square feet of storage in the back.
Okay.
So uh there was a question on where do we uh where do they offload or or load into the building? And it's essentially that that dumpster pad. The left side is the dumpster, the right side is where the the truck uploads and it goes right in back. It's flush, so but it's not a. You know, it's not a raised uh. Area. Yeah, so they 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 offload right there and just roll it right into the into the building. And that would be where the the storage is in the back.
Sir. Turning movement plan in this.
Sixty seven and and it works with pretty much all fire uh fire trucks. If you can. Just put it on one of your plans and then we have it recorded. Up to consensus.
Yeah. I have a clue that I think we prefer to mainly vinyl look on Route nine North. I don't know if they sent or you got links to a couple images. I don't know if you have the Katie building one as well.
I just have the recent.
Okay, I believe the I believe the Katie bill one is the similar sort of.
This is the pitch roof.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I think to Rick's point, I think this actually is more appropriate.
Especially, yeah, with all the red brick.
Yeah, I was trying to look at the other one.
I I tend to agree with. Rick as well, and and I think I agree with you as well. I mean, this elevation is more appropriate for this area. Isn't that a feeling to me?
Eighty to one is similar to that from.
I think I think that's like a this is like a shorter front building and that one like a wider, so. Yeah.
Okay, so no change on.
Seeing they can't replicate Claire and Carlos.
Separate separate uh maybe you come with a more appropriate metal siding. I our architect did it and then I sent it in. It always drives me nuts. He always does that. I don't know why. Oh, I do appreciate you guys giving guidance. Some most towns and cities do not give any guidance and they're like, just change it. Okay, so what? So I do appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Hey. Think uh. You generally again have to make a determination that we agree with the the. The seeker um. Initial determination of seeker is the what action? Again, we will do the view of seeker next month. You know, final details and additional supporting information. Next month. No, we do not have a public hearing.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question? I don't know if anybody did the math on this. I haven't yet um. Point nine three acres is the disturbance area right now. How much is point oh seven acres in square feet? Yeah, okay, thirty three three thousand and fifty square feet. The board. The planning department have any concerns with that? Lee Wade, I guess.
I think I think personally the applicant is going to be helping through a bunch of different departments or reviews and. As well as D O T.
Yeah.
They'll come back and support further supporting information that. Either really supports that or.
Yeah, and I'm sure that there's also a uh. It's called incentive to stay under that line too. So, okay.
We discussed, we will look at. Putting that stormwater into catch bases.
Yeah.
To make sure it's. I think the biggest thing that that we've seen in past reviews is that there's. Some level of control. You know, that's that's definable, which. I don't think we can define that.
Not.
Today, based on the information.
I have a curiosity question. I hadn't seen the term before. Where that stormwater line goes under U S Avenue nine. It it I it's identified as a three by three box culvert. Is that, does that mean it's a concrete? Culvert that's.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I just hadn't seen that on a plan, so. Thank you.
Uh, the. The only last thing I'd wanna point out to the board now and the applicant is in past applications, we have had third party review. Design review there where we haven't got supporting. Design information from you know, from city staff or departments or. D O T or you know, D E C. Uh, with SWOT plan, so that is a component if we. To where we don't have technical. Incurrence from other departments that the board has. Gone out for third party, third party review, which is. Something coordinated with planning staff applicant. I always I point that out is ultimately. Timing, that's one thing we discussed with you is timing. And. How this all fits. I don't know if you wait on that until after you get more answers or you want this. Or to throw the caveat as a condition that if we need it. The board determines you need third party then, you know, obviously. You're fine with us. Okay. I don't know how we, I don't know how we put that into this. Resolution and again, this is so that we save you from coming to another board meeting in a month from now or to hear the board say, oh, you know. We can't answer that.
So we would have to, we would want to coordinate that there are.
I guess the I guess the idea is what the the clarity of what the third party review is for. You know, if. If this ends up going to D O T and they're doing. Review. On the drive, well, I don't see that there's a necessity for a third party review if. We get answers from the Department of Public Works on water sewer connections, all that, same thing. Um, if D O T does. Doesn't take uh. Jurisdiction on the pedestrian connectivity, we still use D O T or the city prescribes the D O T standards for. Pedestrian access, so that's. A little more straightforward.
Um, I do wanna remind the board that this will be referred to the county. Um, it hasn't yet that it will be referred directly after this meeting. There just wasn't time to make the county planning board meeting.
I guess in 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 my mind, now now that I think about the last time we again had third party review where we didn't have D C. Standards was where the applicant wasn't controlling things on site and was proposing to connect or to drain to. City facilities. So I guess that does sort of fall within. Some what you're gonna propose, if you're gonna propose controlling stormwater on site. You know, not going to increase the water runoff to city facilities, well. Then that may be a different scenario than if you're planning to. Sheet drain, just go to existing drains, then then we've had third party review.
So you're leaning.
Uh, 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 again. Unless this board identifies reasoning or or we don't have enough answers.
In my my own concern generals, the the multiple jurisdictions that we have in with. Power with stormwater with sanitary systems with D O T. Everybody here, this lot seems to merge a lot of. Different utilities and different agencies. That. I'm not even certain, you know, the type of review that would be. The most appropriate, I mean, I. I would feel more comfortable with, you know, independent review and then. Rather than. Having third party. Reviewer like like each of the jurisdictions have. Their their authority and mo- many of them have already looked at it. But.
So again, again. You know. The applicant's gonna coordinate with D O T, city B P W, city electric. The town, whatever agencies or whatever departments they. Give them appropriate within those coordinations. Us, I feel comfortable that that should allow the applicant to provide the technical information for the planning board. The only caveat I put on that is again, if. This was deemed a city storm sewer. And you were choosing to increase flow to that or make connection to that storm sewer. In the past, that's one thing that B P W has said. We don't review that, we don't review it technically and and the board had to reply or rely on third party. That. Component, that's that's the only thing I can see. If applicant can. Make it through all the hoops.
Well, it sounds like it's maybe on the line because that's where the planning connects. So.
That's.
Questions, I guess, heads up for the applicant more than anything at that point to expect potential. For that, depending on in what all the coordination.
In my mind, that's something we do. That's something we can clearly add is that like.
Yeah.
If there is a. Stormwater component or stormwater design to utilize city storm facilities, third party review would be required.
Yeah. Yeah.
So when we when we update the drawings and get that worked out, then we could bring a. Just go right to them. Correct. That's um.
And I would include, I would include the town because the. You know, the stormwater line runs right underneath the new driveway.
I've not played any of their.
No, the stormwater. It it's a component of the system. The stormwater line comes from the town of Plattsburgh. And just because there's a corporation line, doesn't mean that it now becomes the city concerned. They have it to the point of deposit. I. They still have a jurisdiction because their. Utility lines fall through your property. They have the right to maintain that stuff. If, yeah, if if you cause disruption to that stormwater line. They're gonna need to fix it.
Yeah. We may have to pick them up. Easyness because they don't have.
Exactly, so so in that communication, it might be appropriate. Exactly, so so in that communication, it might be appropriate to. Address that concern before it becomes a legal issue. I guess that's. That's my point.
There's no more comment from the board. Questions, then we do have a. Draft resolutions. And draft resolution addresses both the. Well, ultimately, the determination uh for. Seeker status was outlined in the resolution outlined in staff comments. We have a number of additional staff comments that are offered in the. You know. For the sketch review. In addition, we've added in our discussion a couple of extra comments that I think maybe makes sense for us to try to solidify. So that someone can. Adopt, you know, adopt the resolution. So. Within my, uh. Outline, I have, uh. And some of this may overlap a little bit, but. Uh, sw- swift disturbance limits. Uh, the New York State DOT Stormwater Review. Or New York State DOT Commercial Driveway Access Review. Along with, um. Third party review if the applicant decides to utilize. Uh, city storms sewer or town storm sewer infrastructure. That this board would need third party review.
That's an addition.
That's an additional comment. A landscaping plan. Which incorporates uh screening of the residential areas for parking. However, that ends up being with fencing and landscaping. Yep, uh, yep, refuse dumpster screening and detail. For, uh. For screening. Uh, pedestrian connectivity to the road. Site and building. I believe the board agrees. Generally with the elevation as presented, the building elevation is presented. Uh, with a alternative. Color for the. Metal siding, which is more cohesive. Um, and then for the uh seeker. Uh. Review, we've requested uh the a phase one. With an outline of results of an old phase two be provided for the site. Uh, give you. Outlining environmental conditions. And then we also would like to see the page four of the uh DEC auto fill, which auto fills some of the questions to give you some background in the seeker form. Those are the items that I had, did any other board members have? Any items?
I don't know if this needs to be. Written down or just added to the. The elevation part, but the pictures as well of some of the.
Yeah, all the right pictures of previous similar style.
For the, for the presentation for the final.
Yeah, yeah, I just kinda like what it would look like in real life.
Okay, no one has anything else to add, uh. Do we have a motion to accept the sketch resolution with the finding from staff? And the addition of the items I just outlined?
Did you see the lighting plan?
Yeah, it's on here. Do you want something with the loading and unloading of the?
I want capability explained address.
Correct, to add that, just add it for the plan.
Yeah.
For the siding.
You're talking siding or you were talking the fence screen dumpster. Not the, not the uh plating, were you?
No, I was talking about the fence and the dumpster enclosure to be coordinated.
We're just coordinated with the each other, not necessarily built. Yeah, okay.
That's. One other item as well is the uh. Sign detail and style. The project sign and detail and style. And that should also, that should also include, uh. Building signage also. Any other items of the board or staff?
What was the first issue Rick brought up about that parcel? Is that nothing with iron? Oh, that that's the the his concern about the historic use of the property, but they said they have the environmental. Okay, forms. That they'll provide from the prior remediation.
Okay. So again, I think we have our comments from staff, we've added. Our comments. Do. Have a motion for the draft sketch resolution and.
I'll make the motion to a draft, adopt the draft resolution uh two four dash zero eight. Uh, pending. All the comments Jim mentioned made by the board. As well as uh addressing of all the planning staff comments as outlined in. Uh, our staff report.
Go second.
I'll second.
Local.
Jim Abala?
Yes.
Rick Perry?
Yes.
Abby Musser, Tom Cosco?
Yes.
Carly Larry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
You have like sign specific comments you want.
I guess I didn't know what my options were.
Like black letters, little yellow letters, they usually like to just put a sign off.
You mean on the building or this?
On the building and on that side.
I want whatever looks classier.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we wanted to look at historical as possible. Yeah.
We'll try to, yeah, we'll try to offer comments from staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Herman, thank you.
So. So to to that point.
Yeah.
We, we can. Those are individual letters.
Yeah.
On the building, if you look at Dollar Generals. Most of a large box that that's like.
Do they have to be yellow?
Yes, that's corporate, but I think that the, you you have options on this. You know, individual letters like that.
More so than that, I do think a sign that is the uh like has a brick pedestal or space kind of that looks more like historic signs.
He he offered.
Yeah, it did.
They.
Brick base.
They base sign, you know, instead of on a.
Shout out to the freeway.
I think, I think a lower level sign that is.
Well, considering there's residential around there, I mean, you don't wanna be sign blowing.
Oh, and it knows my friend. Lived in a place and then they built a Dollar General next to it out on the turnpike and. It blows and the lights like you were saying, they did put up a fence there which hasn't, but.
So I guess board wise. You like the individual letters on the building? And you would like a monument sign?
Individual letters, I don't know if I was on, you know, but.
Yeah, I do, that those, that box thing and then it kind of the lights aren't even and then it looks really bad.
Okay.
You gotta drive around like some of the Dollar Generals.
So, so. Alicia, if you can, uh.
Coordinate with.
Let them, let them know that we like individual letters and a. Monument or a pedestal.
Wasn't showing elevation is those yellow ballards. Can they paint them not yellow? I hate the yellow balls that always, I mean, I just said so it's visible, I was trying to. Change safety, but.
Probably safety and cultural Dollar General yellow.
But, but you know what I'm saying, that's something that really shines out, it's always.
Okay, so this is not gonna be a condition because. But we can share. Would be happy to communicate.
Sure.
The grounds gracious response, they were very open to our request.
Brown, brown ballards, not yellow.
Well, they can tell.
And so any other, uh.
Well, there you go. Oh, so gray or brown ballards.
And let's see.
On yellow.
Those weren't.
See, they don't show them, but I knew that there there was something tacky missing and the balls are across the.
Sage looks not tack.
It's not, well, yeah. Cars don't need to be shown their balls, they shouldn't break them at the beginning, they just don't seem to hit it, that's fine.
Yes.
So do we have any other items to review?
No other items to review.
For the agenda?
On the agenda.
My husband was really disappointed, he couldn't watch the live stream of this discussion, he texted me, he's like, what happened to your screen?
And it's probably gonna be something stupid like I started the Zoom too soon and the whole system went to sleep. Um, I have a feeling that's what Baffo's gonna tell me. Um, so tell him I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's fine.
He can spoil it.
He's like the only person that probably actually.
Um, so additional business, if you're ready to.
That's fine, yeah.
Just a couple announcements, I'll start with the light ones and wait for her quick to get back um before I can be the big one. Um, the, the light ones are that the Community Development Office is looking to hire a community engagement coordinator. And a rep program coordinator as well. Um, so, um. If you know of anybody that would be great and hit those descriptions, um, send them to. Courtney's way, um, and for, um, the John has posted. All over on the, for the county and page and a few other places.
Those are full, full, full times positions? Okay, yeah.
Uh, I don't have all the facts on them, but I just figured it might be. You know, if you already have contacts out there. Um, that might be interesting. And you know, the practice we work on. So, um, yeah, um, and I sort of everything's in that place, there are markets, so. Uh, that happier uh piece of information is that there has been some movement with the fine. Uh, litigation and situation and uh the mayor circulated a formal letter to inform. Internally, which that this is, this is public information. Um, that in early twenty twenty four, the Court of Appeals confirmed its jurisdiction and established a scheduling order for the submission of parties. Grieves. Uh, so basically stating that the city had another change, the the applicant had an opportunity to appeal. Um, and the applicant was using the city's attorney. Um, however, soon after that, the jurisdictional determination, the city received updated information from fine confirming. Uh, for the first time in a really long time, that they're interested um in um in continuing the project. Uh, that intended to modify it. And therefore it would fall outside of. The initial proposed um approvals of the previous boards and so. Uh, the appeal. Um, would not be able to move forward. Um, so essentially. The city's attorney had to abandon the appeal. Um, time is still interested in developing and it sounds like they're forming, formulating. A slightly revised script as well. So. Sorry, sorry, new community the same, um, so this is, um, essentially, um. This is, this came about with the PRI, um, project and funding. So I believe, I I don't have the full dollar amount, but it was about fourteen point two million set aside. To develop the north half of the third street property or in law. Um, into a mixed use development. Oh, rather than how it used to be. That was, that was incorporated in the community. Okay, um, we don't, if everybody else knows what's going on, you can talk. No, I mean, this is, this is your chance to ask questions, um, but if. Anybody from the board wants to jump in and cover it further. You're welcome to take it away, otherwise, yeah, so, um. The PUD, um, so it wasn't a straight site plan. Proposal, um, because there was a mix, a uses proposed a public and private component. Um, and shared parking, um, and some, um. Uh, agreements to develop. The additional public space and a walkway to access and allow um access to the river to remain, um. And so. That. Um, the, the proposal. And PUD plans went through full planning board. And zoning board reviews. Um, and council review and received all approvals that they that it needed. Um, however, there was a citizen committee. That, um, was following along closely and and active. And decided to, uh. Basically sue the, the city, um. And. Sorry, um. Basically derailed the process based on seeker, the, an oversight and seeker findings. Um, I don't, I have not studied the whole case, um, myself, um, but that. That. Challenge led to a series of court hearings and an appeals process. Um, for years, for, I mean, two and a half years. So it just came to an end, um, the, the city was looking at potentially appealing one final time. The potential opportunity to win it. Um, on the applicants to have. But. It wasn't necessary.
So Carly, my understanding is that there is concern over the habitat would be compromised. By improving a surface law that drains into the river into like different habitat development. That's irony, it doesn't make sense.
Is, uh.
I'll do some Googling later.
Do some Googling.
Does, does planning staff? Expect an updated application? Anytime soon?
Um, it is possible that before the end of the year that they may have, uh, reform formulated proposal. They are aware that the state is going through a zoning.
Yeah, I was gonna say, does the planning staff anticipate an adopted zoning code before the new proposal?
That is our hope. Um, we're, we're behind our, our timeframe of by a little bit, um. The consultants finding that there is a lot of information to prevent and, you know. To get to the, I know, for those documents, we still have to have a few additional conversations as well. Guard the review of, um, our existing subdivision. Orders, um, they're going to be proposing revisions to that, but we still have to have a full conversation on it. Um, we haven't discussed parking and there are a few other items.
Well, and stormwater.
Yeah, we won't, and really, we haven't fully discussed design criteria. That we follow there.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
With the day, day, daytime woodshelves, I just can't make those.
Yeah. Well, and we've covered a lot of material, but it's, it's a robust project.
Will that, uh, will that project build still be a part of the original beyond Iowa ward?
At this rate in time. Yes. This, it, it sounds like the state is interested in stone. Otherwise, it's my understanding. Otherwise, it's my understanding that we like we lose that money. But that is, those discussions are really, I agree.
And uh. In your coordination as we, you know, as that potentially gets closer to application. If it does. Can. We request that we actually have legal staff. That is going to sit with us at our regular board meetings and. Support us and.
That would have been helpful.
It it is, it is generally something we, I mean, the board had, I mean, the board had, you know, the secret attorney. Just provide, the city had a secret attorney that was providing.
Yeah.
Review for seeker and then. Uh both. City council actually sat with the board and provided. Uh.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest, I mean. In both of your comments and and your two experiences in the previous process, I don't know if there is. An ability for us to do sort of an internal briefing before an anticipated one would happen or not, just to get people up to speed on. Legal landmines. Property history that we might not be aware of, that might not be able to cover in a half hour. Obviously, I know we have to do it in. That's current way, I don't know what that would look like, but. Um.
Um, if you are meeting with an attorney. That doesn't necessarily, that wouldn't necessarily happen.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be nice not to kill somebody ignorant.
Yeah, and I think. Given the history of the litigation, um we would benefit the city taxpayers to not have to go down that road again.
Mm hmm.
Be able to nip that in the bud early, so.
Any, any other new news?
Nothing major.
Okay.
We've, um, a lot of our projects are. Transitioning phases, um. And right now, um, community development is looking to apply for a couple different C F As. So C F A season, um. And, yeah.
What, what, uh, what's the timeline for Fox Hill Park? I know that one's getting done.
Happening right now.
Yeah. And what's it?
I I don't have firm timelines, um. Sorry to say.
I thought it was, I thought they said it was closed for two weeks.
Is that it? That's all?
I think so, yeah, I forgot most of the playground.
And far as they.
Not on Fox Hill. What about Penn Field? Say, um, common council did approve uh six hundred and seventy five thousand, don't quote me on that. To to pursue funding.
Right.
State. They give.
To split for.
For the playground.
Yeah. Um, it's a consolidated funding.
Oh, this, yeah, I couldn't.
Think so.
Yeah. I don't know where Fox Hills at though. I haven't taken any buildings.
Yeah. I think they they under the installation, but I feel. Your son, um, if you wanna keep it.
No.
Um, does the board have any more questions for staff?
Did you wanna touch on the response that we're getting for so far the public hearing?
Um. No, that would, that will come up in the next meeting.
Okay.
Uh and um there are some public conscience that have been added to the electronic. So you might see those um exhibited T V V. Um, but for sketch and plan. Um of this project, it it didn't seem. Um fair and should be happy. Um. For the review to dive into those comments.
Yeah. That'll be next time.
Are these emails or is this?
That's one step up.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
So no other items, you have a motion to adjourn? Motion. Motion by by Tom?
I did, I did the motion, yeah.
All in favor?
I. Give me who seconded.
And Jim, um, when we get a draft of these uh motion, I might send it out. Review it and make sure that we got. All the notes.
That's fine.
You were, you're. You're mentioning about that.